Everybody can hear me? Everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll bring this teleconference, Indian Trail Town Council, special meeting agenda Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. I officially call the meeting to order. Let's just do a formal roll call. Go by this list. Mr. McIntyre?
He's joining right now.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre is here. We'll go to Mr. Morse.
Present.
Mr. Head?
Present.
Mr. Barber? Oh, we know Todd's here. You hear Todd? Something with his microphone, I'm sure. Ms. Howe?
Yeah, present.
Present.
Okay. Mr. Allen, you here?
Yes, sir.
And is Kathy Wayne here?
Yes, I'm present. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Walter?
I'm here.
Okay. Kathy, would you announce for the staff that's going to be at this meeting?
Okay.
A roll call for them.
Yes, if staff could unmute their phones. You have Abby Ball?
Present.
Jim Wadwitz? Jim, are you present? I'll check with him in a little bit. Carrie Warner? Adam McLamb?
Present.
Todd Unsinger? Todd, are you present? Randy Deese? Randy Deese? Alicia Massey?
Present.
Todd, thank you, Todd. The last present was from who? Carrie?
Alicia Massey.
Alicia, thank you, Alicia. Hayden?
Present.
Okay. All right, Carrie, are you, did you join us? Or Jim Wadwitz? I'll text them as we move forward.
Okay, that's fine. This time, Marcus, can you lead us in the pledge? Or can't you hear me?
He is not here. I think his something disconnected.
Yeah, okay.
He told me he's waiting to be joined, but we just heard his voice, I thought, so.
Okay, well, we'll wait on him. He's waiting to be joined. You know, technology, especially right now, is getting overwhelmed. So there's going to be a lot of glitches. All right, well, I'll, I'll do. Ready, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands.
Which stands one nation.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
For all.
And if we just hold just a moment of silence for all those that are suffering. Okay. Are there any additions or deletions? I need, anyone wants to bring forth?
Morning, Mr. Mayor Marcus McIntyre. Wanted to be record.
Oh, welcome.
Yeah, for some reason, it's not letting me connect the other way, so I have to do it via telephone. But I do want, I do have one addition, sir. That would be seven F.
Seven F? Okay.
Yes, sir. That would be approval of budget amendment, severance package, severance package, and approval appeal.
Okay. Let me get this, that would be approval of, I can't write that all down, so what is that?
I have it.
You have, you have it?
Yes.
Budget amendment, yes, okay. If there's no conflict, I need a motion to approve.
Um.
The amended, the amended, the amended agenda. Did you have something else? Did someone have something to say?
Your honor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. I received a telephone call shortly before the meeting this morning from Reed Helms of Union County Crime Stoppers, and he is asking all of the towns to consider making a donation for a meal for all of the law enforcement officers in Union County that would take place on May the 18th. And he asked me to put that before council. So if council wants to consider that, we would need to add that as item 10E under new business.
Well, we'll just add it, and when we get to it, we'll talk about it.
Well, I think we need to get a motion from council to add that, right?
Council. Yeah, we need to, a motion to, to, oh, God, what's it called?
Okay.
Basically.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Okay, please do.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. It's going to be 10E, right, Kathy? Last item, 10E.
10E.
10E, which is fine, yes, thank you.
Yeah. I want to add item 10E to the agenda. That would be Union County Crime Stoppers Meal for emergency personnel.
Okay. All right, so that's 10E, and you've added, and you have seven F.
Correct, sir.
Could be added, okay. All right. Kathy's adding them to the agenda. If there's no discussion or any, is there more to add?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, then I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion. All in favor? Just state your name and go around the board.
Mike Head in favor.
Okay.
Todd Barber in favor.
Okay.
Surely, how? In favor?
And Jerry Morse?
Jerry Morse in favor.
Okay. All right, so that's approved, the agenda's approved. And we move to presentations. National Day of Prayer proclamation. I was supposed to read that, but Marcus, do you have that in front of you? I'm in a very bad lit area.
I would have to pull it up on the phone, but I do not have that. I do not have the full text.
Okay. All right, all right, Kathy, you have it, right? Right in front of you?
Yeah, pulling it up as we speak, we are. Would you like me to read it?
Would you read it? I'm in a very dark area, and I can't make out the words.
I have to read my computer screen every year, so. Town of Indian Trail proclamation, a national day of prayer, whereas the 69th observance of the national day of prayer will be held on Thursday, May 7th, 2020, with the theme, "Pray God's Glory Across the Earth," based on Habakkuk 214. Whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and the United States Congress in 1952, approved as a joint resolution, quote, "That the President shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than Sunday as a national day of prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation at churches and groups and as individuals." Whereas the United States Congress in 1998, 1988, excuse me, by public law 100-307, as amended, establishes an act to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the date on which the national day of prayer is celebrated. Whereas leaders and citizens of our communities, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God. Whereas recognizing the love of God, we, the citizens of Indian Trail, treasure the freedom to gather in prayer, exercising reliance on God's power in the face of present challenges and threats, asking for His blessing on every individual of our town. Now therefore I, may I say?
Just state my name.
My.
Michael Alvarez. Michael Alvarez.
Mayor of the.
Mayor of the town of Indian Trail.
Do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2020, as a day of prayer throughout the town of Indian Trail, and I commend this observance to all our citizens, I being Mayor Alvarez. In witness whereof, Mayor Alvarez sets his hand and seal, caused the great seal of the town of Indian Trail to be affixed this 28th day of April, 2020.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're very welcome, Mayor.
I definitely picked the wrong room to sit in. Let me just look at that. Next is highlights regarding,
Regarding economic.
Estimate, economic activity, okay.
Mr. Plante, if he's present, if he could come forward on the video.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Chris. Hope you're doing well.
I'm doing great. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Alvarez, Mayor Proton McIntyre, council members, Manager Allen. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and I appreciate you asking me to give a brief report on all the economic development goings on here in Union County. So I've had a couple conversations with a few of you, and appreciate the ability to clarify some misconceptions and misinformation about our past relationships. I've really enjoyed getting to know and working with Manager Allen, as well as Mr. Gary Evans. For those in the audience, if you may not be aware, my name is Chris Plante, and I'm the Executive Director of Economic Development here at Union County. I've been performing economic development activities here in the county since 1999, so just over 20 years. First, starting in Monroe, but in 2013 was given the lead of the Unified Economic Development Agency for the county. And so for the past seven years, I've been running that organization. Many times, I think people confuse economic growth with economic development. And the difference really is economic growth occurs without a focus plan. It's really that things are, the right elements are in place that allow growth to occur. And then economic development, on the other hand, is really based in a strategy. A real focused strategy to build a sustainable economy for our local community. Boiled down, it's basically to create new tax space and new career opportunities for our residents. My office developed the first comprehensive economic development work plan for Union County since the early 1990s. And since then, we're now in the third generation of that plan. The plan has four areas of focus, that being precision manufacturing, agribusiness, logistics operations, and office and commercial development. If you think about it, from Marvin to Marshville, there's very few places that provide the most, or the breadth of economic and social diversity is our community. And this even rivals some states. And so the key of this, though, for us, allows our county to promote ourselves through a wide assortment of projects. So the companies that want to, that Waxaw may be trying to lure is very different than the companies that Indian Trail is looking for. So based on this, we have a lot of things that we have to perform. So we work with our local municipalities in the county to develop targeted industry lists, things, companies where we think that we are the most competitive to help lure to the area, and really weave that fabric of the economy here. We work directly with our local industries. There's roughly 190 of those that are in our database right now that are small and large, and we work with a lot of issues for those folks to encourage them to retain employment here, as well as grow in Union County. We manage the economic development incentive program, a performance-based program that ensures the taxpayers are receiving a good return, return on investment for their, for these incentives. We also heavily count the outside business community. Through many methods, you can imagine, social media to print, everything else in between. Finally, we build speculative product. So where the private sector occasionally does not come in and do speculative work, the county is, has the ability at times to put in some industrial product, that in industrial parks or even spec buildings sometime in the future, possibly, as well as public-private partnerships. Hopefully, that will encourage and take some of the barriers out of, why, for companies to relocate to our community. In fact, the Union County, the commissioners just recently made an unprecedented commitment to the growth of our industrial base with the creation of the county's first owned industrial park. The Piedmont Innovation Park is southeast of the Charlotte-Munro Executive Airport, along Gold Mine Road. That park has generated an immediate dividend for the county. It allowed ATI, a local company, homegrown company, to here and created $140 million investment in a new super alloy facility to serve the aerospace communities. This project would not have landed in our community, only cannot purchase that land. We've also been working within Indian Trail a good bit since 2013. Our office regularly submit properties within the industrial parks, such as Industrial Ventures 1 and 2, Oakwood Creek, and other sites within the town. We've actually worked 93 sites, excuse me, 93 projects, which have considered sites within Indian Trail. 15 of those projects have located or expanded within the town's corporate limits, adding about $30 million of new capital investment and adding at least the creation of 170 new jobs. Indian Trail's activity accounts for about 17 and 1/2% of all the deals that we've landed within Union County. The most recent project is the pending expansion of Stafford corrugated products on a new site in the old Hickory Industrial Park. This project could double the company's presence in the town. The Union County Board of County Commissioners supported this project with an economic development incentive of $15,000, a five-year incentive at their last regular meeting. We're also working with another large project that will hopefully further develop the town. And then we're constantly looking for ways to enhance our ability to serve you and all the residents of Indian Trail. My team and I are here to, to help in any way, and hopefully we will, you will see our office and our staff as an extension of your staff. So we're here to, here to provide whatever help we can. And so with that, that, would like to open up any questions or conversations with you.
Mayor Protem, you're, any questions?
Yeah, I do. So, Mr. Plante, thank you very much for that. I know that in the past, the town, in the last few years, I haven't had much discussions with you and your office, but hopefully that's a new sign going forward where we can kind of work together. Based on the, and I don't know if you have these numbers, but based on the current economic conditions that we're seeing with COVID-19, businesses being shuttered and so forth, what do you think, do you have any idea as to, right now, I don't know if you do, but you know, just figured it would be a good time to ask, what the, if we have any companies that we know of within the town, any businesses that are being shuttered, that we, as the council, may be able to at least look to offering some help or to try and help have them, you know, stay in the town, that sort of thing?
Currently, there's a few small companies that we are watching that provide, you know, products that aren't necessarily essential, and so promotional products, things of that nature. So we are watching those companies very closely, doing what we can to help them, you know, supporting them by showing them avenues to the PPP funding sources and those loans, the SBA loans, to help them go through that. From a town's perspective, I don't think so at this point. You know, really, it's going to require some federal assistance for these folks to make it through some of the tough times. But I do, hopefully, with the recent announcement of us opening the government back up and the, and the community, you know, beyond May 8th, that they have been able to weather this storm. You know, we were sitting there at unprecedented numbers at employment, and unemployment rate was so low, the most recent numbers from February, and we're anxious to see what those numbers are going to turn out to be. We do know of some furloughs at some of our larger industries, not necessarily located within Indian Trail. But they, they all have plans to bring folks back. There's just sort of, they're pulling maintenance projects and other things forward to try to take advantage of this downtime of their supply chain. So it's, it's been an interesting time, for sure, as we, you know, our, our entire operation, basically, has been client maintenance at this point, just trying to take care of those existing industries that are here, providing any resource we can, helping them determine their essential nature, so that they can stay operational. So we've done a lot of work with that. But there's nothing specifically, no single company that I would suggest that we meet with right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morse, you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Head? Are you still with us, Mike?
Oh, I was on you, sorry. No, nothing at this time. Chris, just thank you for all your efforts, and we appreciate the support from Union County Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Howe?
Not at this time, thank you.
And Mr. Barber?
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. Plante, for the update, and really appreciate you looking, you know, forward and not looking at what's happened in the past, and thank you for working with our manager, Mr. Allen, and for the benefit of Indian Trail and Union County. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Indian Trail being our largest municipality, we need to find opportunities, really grow here.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Plante, based on, you know, the makeup of the town as it is right now, and the current conditions, is there anything that you would recommend this council do to prepare ourselves as we come out of this for possible opportunities, companies either looking to relocate or to establish a foothold in North Carolina or right outside of Charlotte? Is there anything you think that we, as a council, should do to prepare ourselves for any of these opportunities should they come along?
Yeah, you know, we, we have worked with Lincoln University to do some studies on the value of manufacturing, and it, what I think a lot of people don't understand is they, manufacturing in the industrial, commercial base is the highest value property within a town. So, you know, pound for pound, acre for acre, industrial, commercial is, is where you get the biggest bang for your buck with the least amount of resource draw. And so continue to go forward is look at your planning and make sure that you protect the industrial, commercial pockets that you want to see growth occur at. Really try to secure some of that land through planning and zoning. That would be the biggest help. If you look at, we've almost put in, we're just over $800 million in investment in Union County since 2013. Indian Trail has received about 30 of that. And so the reason it's so small is because the town is really focused very well on its quality of life. You know, the parks that are put in are incredible, the, the retail development that's occurred, you know, is, is very strong to support that. And the residential growth, obviously, is amazing, too, to provide the workforce. What you, the next step, really, for the town is to look for some areas that it protects for larger investments, or larger companies. Think about it, Harris Teeter really is probably your largest employer and single entity. Everybody else is fairly small, which is not a bad thing. It's just the way it's developed, you're not going to get a tremendous growth in your commercial tax space without protecting some of that property. So, you know, to get the 20, 30, $50 million expansions and relocations, they need land. And they can't do that on two and five acre parcels. They need to do that on, you know, 100 acres or more is the kind of property that they want to look at. And so that was just, the biggest thing is to identify those areas that you want to put that core industrial, commercial, and protect it through zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Chris, for coming, and in the last few years, I can say I've been very impressed. When you first came to us, it was like you have visions that this is going to be done overnight, and sometimes it's like, all right, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? And not realizing it takes years to do, and you're actually, your vision's developing very nicely. Very, and thank you for taking the time to come out on a Tuesday morning during this pandemic, and just keep your family and yourselves safe.
Thank you so much. The same to you all as well, and appreciate the support and looking forward to working with you.
Okay. Thank you. I guess you can go home now. Okay, now it's for public comments. Kathy, you said you had one?
I have one from Meg Fielding. Would you like me to read it, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're the only one.
One question. There's item 4C, Silver Line T O D update?
Oh, shoot, yeah. That barely printed out, thanks. The, let's skip, let's do the council. What was it?
It was item 4C.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Brandy.
Okay, Brandy.
I know Brandy's online. We're working with her to get her connected. Abby, do you have an update for Brandy?
Good morning, can you hear me?
We hear you, Brandy.
We hear you, Brandy. Good morning, Council. We wanted to probably, here with an update on the Silver Line. We haven't talked much about this. So the Silver Line Light Rail project is moving forward as scheduled. The current pandemic has not delayed the project, as the project team continues to work remotely from home and holds virtual meetings as originally scheduled. The project team, public and personal meetings, have discussed potential issues of crossing Union County. Some have established, which I had, yes. Either at the governmental center in Charlotte or virtually since the end of March.
Hey, guys, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I can barely hear. Same here.
Same.
Is this a little better?
Same.
Go ahead, Brandy, speak. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Do you want me to start over?
Yes, because we missed something. Yep, thanks.
Okay. The Silver Line Light Rail project is moving forward as scheduled. The current pandemic has not delayed the project, as the project team continues to work remotely from home and holds virtual meetings as originally scheduled. The project team did hold an in-person meeting here at Indian Trail Town Hall at the very end of January to discuss potential issues of crossing into Union County. Stalling staff members were present as well. Since that time, multiple meetings have been held either at the governmental center in Charlotte or virtually since the end of March. Project management plan was sent to the project team members as of yesterday. This plan calls for a possible alignment extension from CPCC Levine Campus towards, eastward towards Indian Trail, with an assumed end of line south of US 74 near Indian Trail Road. What this means is that the full plan does not list stallings in Indian Trail in each of the alignment descriptions. However, CATS has scheduled a Silver Line workshop with staff members next Monday. They will be presenting initial concepts of alignments and stations from CPCC to Indian Trail. I do feel like that partly the reason that this is pulled out separately is simply we have less challenges than, say, Wilkinson Boulevard and all the things that they have to try to work around to get the Silver Line in place. But I'd like to encourage council that if you personally, your opinions be known and heard loud and clear. Gaston County has been very successful in demonstrating their excitement for the project. And if we want to have a chance, I think that we should do the same. I'll be guiding. It's any questions you may have. Thank you.
This, Brandy, this is Michael. Describe being loud at being in favor of it. What would you say is the best effort?
What I heard from the CATS staff members is that, you know, they had officials, elected officials, reaching out to them personally, letting them know of their support and their excitement. From a CATS perspective, if they don't hear anything from Indian Trail or Stallings or Union County, it also, it kind of makes you feel like maybe you're not sure whether they're in favor of the project. And that's a little bit overwhelming considering all the undertaking that's going on behind the scenes for plans.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, please? Mr. Mayor, asking to be recognized. Are you there, Michael?
I think something happened, I don't see him on the list of participants anymore. He may have gotten disconnected.
All right, let's wait for him to come back. Well, in the meantime, let me just ask a question while we wait for him, if it's okay. Um, Brandy, you mentioned that it is less challenging for stallings and for Indian Trail to get the line because we don't face the challenges that Wilkinson Boulevard has and so forth. Do you think the, um, the study committee recognizes the, I guess, the fact that we don't have those difficulties and therefore we should strongly be considered, although we are not on the two term, or we're not on the terminus point or even the point before, stallings is not on the point before? So, what are your thoughts around that? Because we, I personally do support the rail, the light rail, especially in Indian Trail. But, you know, we don't know if we push, if that's going to alienate anyone or, you know, I understand your, the impetus to contact them and go from there, but what do you think that if we push, that they are aware of the fact that we don't have such challenges as the other places?
I feel like they're not in that plan specifically. However, they fully understand that crossing into Union County.
I can't answer a phone.
So, although, you know, there's not as many facilities and structures and businesses and difficulties from a technical perspective, politically and financially, crossing that county line is certainly going to be difficult, so they understand that. I just think right now it's on the very technical part and they pulled it out separately to have discussions with us on it, but it's definitely not as challenging, you know, as the areas in Charlotte or, you know, even crossing the river to Gaston.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you back with us, sir?
I'm back on.
All right.
So, I asked a question.
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh...
Something happened with my phone.
Mr. Mayor, this is Todd Barber, could I be recognized to ask Andy, uh, Ms. Dees a question?
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Dees, you mentioned reaching out to the people. I don't know if you have contact or people we should contact, but if you could send that to the mayor of the council and Mr. Allen, if you have that information of who we should contact and reach out to, uh, can you do that? Email that out to us. I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a question?
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is Councilman Morse.
Yes, sir.
Um, my question is for Brandy.
Okay.
Video working?
Go right ahead.
Okay, Brandy, um, you said there were significantly less challenges coming into Union County? Is that correct?
If we can get her back.
Okay, I'll hold my questions, thank you.
Okay, okay, you hold your question. All right, any, anyone else have anything to, any questions? No? Okay, so that moves us on to public comments. I'll open the public comments and you have just the one, Kathy? From this Meg?
Kathy, you're on mute.
Oh, you have me on mute?
No, I was, thank you. We have one from Meg Fielding and Ms. Fielding says, "I want to take a minute to thank the Indian Trail town staff and the council for their continued support and communication with our residents during this Corona time. I receive your emails and I see you and members of the council on Facebook often. It reminds me of the care and concern you express in so many ways for all our residents. Thank you."
Wow. Doing a good job, everyone. People are quick to complain, but it's very hard to get someone to make a compliment. Since there's no other public comments, I'll close public comments. Captain James, are you with us?
I am, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
The, uh, I have a few, just a couple of numbers I was going to catch you up on. Mr. McIntyre asked about it at the last meeting about our accident base and what it was looking like as far as the numbers go comparatively with the drop in traffic. That drop in traffic's starting to come back and it's working its way back up, but our numbers are staying between that 50 and 70 mark. We're shooting it probably right at the 70 number for the end of this month where we, we've dropped it to, over the last few months, working that, uh, having this special enforcement detail. Our, we're actually one, going from 210 the month of February and the number of reports that we took, we're sitting at around 209 right now. So, we're projected, we're actually on, shooting our way back up, so to speak. Our total events or total calls, we're 200 down from right before this, the pandemic started, so we're sitting at about 4,000, 4,600 events for the month. So, we're, I won't call it average, but we're staying right around the average of what we've been the, probably since the month of December. So, we're staying busy, but a lot of it's got to do with people being at home all the time now and the, uh, our traffic numbers are starting to ease back up as they, people get out, start to move around. That's really all I have for you, unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Captain James? No, thank you, Captain James.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve.
This is Mr. Barber, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Barber's made the motion to approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Mr. McIntyre?
In favor.
Mr. Head?
In favor.
Mr. Morse?
In favor.
And Ms. Howe?
In favor.
And just, Mr. Barber, just for the record?
In favor.
Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously. There's no public hearings? Old business, none, new businesses, first item is consideration of a new ABC store and that was brought to the table by myself. They, you know, we all know how the ABC store system works, but we need this vote in order for them to move forward with the state.
Um, Councilman Morse requesting to be recognized?
Yes.
Can you provide some detail of exactly what this motion really needs to read like?
We will throw that, we will throw that to Karen to answer. If you would, Karen?
Sure, so, um, part of the process of opening a new ABC store in Indian Trail includes a approval by this council for the location. So, uh, this has been approved by the ABC Commission. The next step would be for this council to, whether they approve the location, not the existence of, but simply the location of the second. If the council turned their votes to not approve the location, the town would call a public hearing, discuss it and have a, uh, a hearing on the location of the store. So, this is the first step, if there is action to where the store is going by council, then this, uh, this basically gives the green light to the local ABC board to go ahead and begin construction of the new facility. Does that answer your question?
Is there another question?
There is, it's a follow-up to that, thank you, Karen. So, the, the new location, where exactly is the new location?
It's in Sun Valley, um, gosh, probably...
Well, that was, that was presented to us recently, right? That item was presented to us and we all sat there and looked at the location. So, unless it's, it hasn't changed from the last time.
Yeah, it's going to be right there in front of the Bowlin Alley project, it's right next, you know, adjacent to that property.
Is, sorry to interrupt, is there a way Kathy or Abby that we could pull the site picture up onto the screen for everybody to see? It is part of the pack, um, the, um... Anyone see that? Is it too small?
Yeah, if you have a physical document that you could present, share.
Uh, I can send you one via email. If this isn't sufficient.
Who's presenting?
It's in, sorry, it's in the agenda packet. If you all can, if y'all are able to pull that up, I'm sorry, I don't know if Abby or somebody can pull that agenda packet up on the screen, everyone to see, is that possible, guys? Hold on, let me see if I can help her locate it real quick.
I'll have to pull the current screen down to be able to locate it.
Okay, sorry, technology. Okay, yeah, give us just a moment, I'll get her and we'll get together on it. Let's see.
Do we want to just pass over that one or is, if they're going to take a few and move to the next item or just sit and wait?
I think we can find it quickly, Abby, I've got the file, Abby, do you want me to do it?
Um, I'm on the laptop, so I can't access email right now.
Kathy, can y'all hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, David, we can hear you.
Oh, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me explain again exactly where that is. If you know where McDonald's is on Monroe Road, it's almost across the street, but there's a, um, there's a house there, it's not the very first house, it's the second house down from, um, the entrance there to Brandon Oaks, it'd be the second house down, but it'll sit out towards the road, uh, near Monroe Road. If you know, I think everybody knows where the, uh, the Bowlin Alley is, then it'll be, if you're facing it, it'll be not exactly in front of it, but facing it just off to the left in front of it. So, there's been a sign there for probably, uh, I don't know, probably 45 days now, 50 days maybe, where, where the location is, is going to be. So, um, I think, uh, I'll ask in the last meeting, has, has everybody on the council seen the sign on Monroe Road?
I have.
Have.
Yes.
Okay, if, if you've seen the sign, that's where, that's where the ABC store is going.
It appears that it's an out parcel of a strip center that's going to include the Bowlin Alley. Is that accurate, David?
I beg your pardon, Kathy, what'd you say?
This is Karen, sorry, it looks like it's, it looks like it's, um, in the, an out parcel of the strip center that's going to include the Bowlin Alley, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, it is the, um, it, it sits, it's the lot right next to the Bowlin Alley.
Yeah.
And it, but it, but it kind of sits out in front of it, if you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
It's exactly where the sign is, I think the sign's probably in the middle of the location of where it's going. So, if, if that answers Councilman Morse's question about where's it going, if he's seen the sign, then, or if all of you have, you'll know exactly where it's going.
Thank you, really that question was for, more for the benefit of the public since we're not in a, in a traditional public setting. The other question, and really this might go back to Chris Platte and the question earlier about how the coronavirus is affecting retail. You know, I'm wondering what retail's going to look like here in the future and capacity as well. So, that's, that's kind of been on my mind, um, just something to consider, but whenever we're ready to really get into a good discussion on this, I, I have a couple of more points I'd like to make.
Okay, thank you, Morse.
And just to clarify, so, um, the purpose of the, of the action of council right now is to approve the location, council really doesn't have, um, authority, well, of course, you can say and discuss and bring up any points you want, but there's really not an authority to, um, deny a second store in town that, of course, comes from the ABC Commission, so I just want to make that clarification.
Sure, thank you, and really, that wasn't in a response to denying a store, it was just the timing of the store, basically.
Perfect, thank you, sorry about that.
Well, I, I...
I gotta, this is, this is Todd Barber, I got a question, if it's okay. You did say that the ABC, Ms. Walter, you did say the ABC Commission has approved this second location, correct?
That is the indication from the letter we received from the attorney for the ABC store, or for the ABC, the, I'm sorry, the ABC board, yes.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, let me just ask one question, Mr. Cohen, hopefully you're still on the line, during the whole COVID-19 crisis, have you, um, do you know if you've seen you or your manager at the store? Has seen a decrease in alcohol sales within your ABC store, sir?
No, as a matter of fact, the ABC store for the month of March set a record. It sold $153,000 more of alcohol or alcoholic beverages in, in March, it was, it was the biggest March in history and as of last Friday, we were $100,000 over, uh, so, these will be two of the biggest months in history. And just quickly like to say and give some kudos to the store manager and the way they're handling it over there, they're phenomenal. You know, there's, there's, we've set some guidelines where seven people can go in the store, at times 10 people, you know, taking a line, trying to expedite things as much as possible. We've given the employees, of course, and don't let, I'm kind of getting off, but giving employees the, the option of working or not working if they prefer not to work, all but one of them chose to work, uh, so, actually paid them more, but, uh, just, just kind of throwing this out there, what, what we're trying to do is, is, uh, not, we're not trying to speed up anything, we're ready to go on that store and, uh, you know, basically, the quicker we get that store built, and it's going to take over a year to build that store, you know, the more money the town's going to make and the quicker the town's going to make it, you know, unfortunately, in this world, uh, it seems like liquor sales go up when times get, get bad. You know, people are at home and they, they drink more and, uh, or obviously they do, but anyway, it's, uh, the reason, I mean, we're, we're not trying to speed this process, but we're just trying to get it up and going. There's a lot of things that we need to do before we even start building it, is architectural design, uh, we need, we need to get that underway, that, you know, we probably won't physically start building that store in the, I don't know if Wes Henson's on, on, on here, but Wes could explain this, it'll probably be, we've talked about this maybe four, five months, four months down the road before, five months down the road before we may actually see dirt getting pushed, uh, but a lot of this is going to be architectural design and just getting ready and, and getting the store put, you know, ready to be put up, so, uh, hopefully that, that's somewhat helpful, answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cohen? On the ABC? Well, I'll need a motion to approve?
Well, I'd like to, Councilman Morse requesting to be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Morse.
Yeah, I would like to recommend... Yeah, I would like to recommend that we put this up for a public hearing. I think that this is a big issue, um, that, whether, whether you're in favor or not in favor, but I believe that it's fair to the people in the Sun Valley area to have a public hearing on this. It's, this will be in their backyard. Just my suggestion, thank you.
I, I, can, can I say something? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, I, I give you the floor, Mr. Cohen.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, you know, part of the, uh, part of the, uh, process that we go through is putting that sign up. And, uh, the sign has been there now, no, no, exactly, maybe, let's say it's been there fifty days, uh, for, and, and it's for the residents that live in that area. And, uh, we've not had one phone call, uh, to anybody to object to it. Uh, that in, is somewhat of a public hearing, is there's no objections. And secondly, uh, we already have a ABC store, uh, and in town. And as, as we all know, at times people, and, and I don't, I don't see a problem in, uh, in the town objecting to it because we already have one. You know, what, what we think of and what I try to think of is the betterment of the town. And the town's losing revenue because the only real thing that, that's gonna happen is people are going to Monroe or they're gonna stop in Matthews and, and buy their, their, uh, alcohol on their way home. And, uh, this is gonna create, making the town much more money. And if you, if you, you know, it, I don't know who would really have an objection. It's gonna be a beautiful building, it's not gonna be, uh, near any residential, uh, it's gonna be out near the road. And, uh, you know, one of the things I've always thought of is if you're gonna buy alcohol, the closest, the better, uh, to do it. But that's just my opinion, and, uh, I think the public has had, has had a chance to, uh, comment to the ABC store, and we've got absolutely zero, uh, uh, you know, people call, uh, on that sign. So with that being said, um, you know, hopefully, go ahead.
And I'm, I'll close Mr. Cohen's comments out by saying, the only calls I get about is, when is it gonna be done? I'm tired of going to the other side of seventy-four. So I said, that's beyond my control. So, all right, if there's no more questions, I still need a motion.
Well, Mr. Morris can make his motion and, and, you know, we, we can support it or we can vote it down and then move with, move with another motion. I mean, that's just how I look at it. If he feels so strongly he wants to have a public comment period, allow him to make his motion and then we'll see how council votes and then we'll go from there.
I do, I, I have. Counsel, if I may, uh, there is an ordinance, there is an ordinance procedure. Um, I, we would have to amend the ordinance in order to have a public hearing prior to this vote. So, um, as, uh, section seventy-one ninety of our code of ordinances lays out for council's approval of the location. Uh, and so the step that we're at right now is, um, we received the, I'm gonna call it the initial permit from the, for the ABC store from the ABC commission and the board. The ca- and the, I'm reading out of the stat, the council shall consider the proposed location at the next town council meeting and determine whether it objects to the proposed said location. If it's objected by majority, a public hearing date shall be set and the local ABC board notified. So prior to us, um, create, establish a public hearing, by ordinance, we are required to have a vote about the location. So I do want to just, unless this council would first choose to amend the ordinance. Um, so sorry about, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the procedure that's made out in, um, our own code of ordinances.
The vote determines the hearing.
Correct.
So we need the vote on the item that is on the agenda.
Motion, uh, this is Councilman Barber, can I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion for a new Indian Trail ABC store.
And this is.
If I may, Mr. Barber, um, what, what we are approving is the location of the store. So if we could be specific on that motion, it would be the council, um, moves to approve the proposed location for a second, um, Indian Trail ABC store.
Okay, a motion to approve us the second location for a new Indian Trail ABC store. Is that better? Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Barber.
That's good.
Mr. Barber votes in favor, Ms. Howe? Shirley? Is she muted?
I'm looking for her to see.
I don't see her on there unless she is on the phone.
Yeah, she's listed as one of the iPads, her video's not on, um, but it's, it's unmuted, I believe.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I hear, oh, there you are, I hear you.
I, I had a question about this, about, about the location. I haven't seen the sign because usually I don't have to go that way to get home all the time. So, uh, if they decide to widen Monroe Road, how close is this store to the main road? That will be to the main road? Is it, you know, I'm talking about parking and in and out, uh?
Well, I'm, I'm sure they put that in the, uh, design features with a sewer and, uh, extended sidewalk, if someone can verify that.
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Mayor, this is Wes Henson, uh, attorney for the ABC board. I can speak to that.
Thank you, Wes. What, you have the floor?
Uh, Ms. Howe, the, the, um, site is designed around that expansion of Monroe Road. Uh, there's not been an acquisition of those, um, of, of that thoroughfare from the DOT yet, but the site contemplates that based on their design plans. So, and, and those expansion plans are already incorporated into the site. So when they do come, there'll be no physical relocation, um, again, because it's, the, the entire site's been designed around that. It won't affect parking, the parking will still be per the Indian Trail parking ordinance. All of the infrastructure from sewer, water, power, all of that is designed around that expansion already.
Okay, thank you. And my vote would be for, for, for this.
For this?
Yes.
And Mr. McIntyre?
I support that, the, the motion, Mr. Barber, is put forward.
Yes, okay, um, Mr. Head?
In favor.
In favor? Mr. Morse?
Opposed.
Okay, let the record stand. Excuse me, all were in favor, with Mr. Morse supposing. Motion passes. Okay, next item up is the, uh, status of the, see, Wesley Chapel Stouts Road on the grading. So grade, the grade separating, separation project. Mr. Hunt Sinker? Or someone speaking in his place?
No, can y'all hear me now?
I hear you.
Okay. Yes, we, uh, just so, uh, to keep y'all abreast to, uh, fut- future projects around the area of, uh, Mr. Allen and myself attended a, a meeting with, uh, uh, the rail division for NC DOT has hired a consultant, uh, to start looking at, uh, possibly moving forward with, uh, the project, the over, grade separation or overpass over the railroad line along Wesley Chapel Road. And, um, due to the fact that evidently they have another project, uh, I'm not aware of where, where at, that they evidently is not ready to go, and so they're wanting to transfer grant money they got for that project to Wesley Chapel. So this is kinda sped up just here recently, out of the blue. And so the town just was just made aware of this, uh, back in March. And so again, we, we attend this meeting, uh, I verbally just, um, had my concerns obviously with, uh, closing the road to build this and, and what were the options out there to, to, uh, to facilitate not, for that not to occur? And everybody realizes, uh, that was on, in the meeting, um, that you, we can't shut that road down with twenty thousand cars a day and I think it was seventy-five buses, uh, every day when schools, uh, open. So, uh, they're, they, they know that and they've, they've came out with a couple of alternatives to figure out how to do that, and that hasn't been selected, but we kinda went over them in the meeting. Uh, one is obviously go one side of the road, east side, and build it and keep the road open, go, or the, or the other side of the west side. Or actually do two single, uh, bridge lanes on either side and then bring them back together on the other side. But, uh, Division Ten, uh, do not, doesn't want that because it's, it becomes a maintenance, uh, issue for them. So I don't think that's a possibility, but I think the, the two options are either, either is to go and want it either side. And I, I proposed, um, to, uh, actually build a temporary bypass road around, you know, on one side of the road, build it temporarily and then build the overpass actually along the existing alignment, so the alignment doesn't change. Um, and so they're taking that into consideration as well. And, uh, so the town moving forward needs to get with them in the next month or so to talk about pedestrian access and what we want as a cross-section along that road, that, um, particular overpass. Because the way our comp plan, uh, or Wesley Chapel corridor study laid out and kinda going with the comp plan is, you know, we want, uh, either three different options. We want multi-use paths on both sides, we are, do we, do we want five-foot sidewalk lanes and then do bike lanes along that corridor? Or do we want to do a combination of both? Now, I feel strongly that they're not gonna allow us to do both because that'd be a huge cross-section, so we're gonna have to make a decision on which one we want. And so that's, will, will come in the next month or so. And so, but it appears that, uh, they, they think that they'll get, they'll get the, um, approval to transfer the funds to this project. And as you saw in your packet, you know, they're, they're looking at, uh, hitting it, uh, the design fairly soon and then I think right away twenty-twenty-five and construction twenty-twenty-seven. Um, where this goes with the possibility of an actual widening of Wesley Chapel Road, which is, you know, as, as y'all have been told before, that isn't a prioritization listing, um, that hasn't been selected yet. I don't feel like it will be for this next round. So I think it's gonna be further down the line, so I don't think that, obviously, I don't think the two projects are, uh, uh, conflict each other. And I'm sure the rail division and the NC DOT is not gonna allow that to happen. So, um, but again, this project's gonna probably move forward and you're probably gonna see some action and, uh, keep getting updates in the next year or two. Any questions?
That was your short answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I'm trying, trying to get you all the information as possible, as much as possible.
I know.
Any questions on this update?
McIntyre here, can I be recognized?
Yes. Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Mr. Hunt Sinker, the, um, that's good news in that, you know, we, this project can get going. The question that I have for that particular crossing is, if, once they build it, will it be two lanes or four lanes? Because it would be, it would defeat the purpose of building it two, two lanes when the, the, the objective, uh, when Wesley Chapel, um, Stouts Road is widened, it's to be four, so.
Yeah, no, they, they're, they're gonna match our quarter study, so they, they, they are aware that they gotta do four eleven-foot lanes at a minimum, uh, with a median, uh, and then, and then again, we, we have to figure out pedestrian wa- access-wise, what we need. But yes, it'll be four lanes.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Morse?
Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what was the timeframe, again, on, on that project?
They're, again, they're, they're just getting to the beginnings of it. I, they didn't really have a date set for design to start, they just had a date set for, uh, right away to begin, um, twenty-twenty-five and a let date of twenty-twenty-seven. I think, uh, I think they're shooting hard to get design started and after the fiscal year, which is October of this year.
Thank you, sir.
Or at least getting environmental documents started and all that good stuff.
Uh, any other questions, Mr. Header, Ms. Howe?
No.
Uh, this is, this is a, I'm sorry, this is a ten million dollar project, uh, just to be aware, it's what's in the step right now.
Okay, that's good to know. Well, thanks, Todd, thanks for being here and all, staying at work through all of this. Um, I see here next is the, um, pond and pump station over for First Avenue, the bid award. And that's you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we, we advertised the project, uh, in April and, uh, got bids back, uh, last Thursday. Be, saw in your packet, uh, our engineer estimate was nine hundred and, uh, uh, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And our alternates were seventy-three thousand and the bids came back, the low bid came, came back nine, ninety-four thousand and the bid alternate fifty-nine thousand. I'll, I'll explain a little bit about the alternates real quick. Um, we put alternates in the contract because there's a couple additional items that we wanted to get pricing from the contractor to see if it would be worth our while to purchase, you know, or basically purchase them or, or, or build them. And one, one line item, I think we're gonna have to, uh, I, I would ask y'all to approve the day as an alternate, is the rebuilding of the road, uh, Woodhaven, which is where we're accessing, that is a private street, it's only like sixteen feet wide. And obviously, I feel it's probably gonna need to repair all the way up to Indian Trail Road. But it technically doesn't, uh, have to be built to complete the project, so that's why it's an alternate. But I, I feel certain we're probably gonna end up, uh, messing that road up fairly, fairly, uh, well, considering loading and, um, digging out dirt and hauling dirt away and all that good stuff. So, uh, the other items is a, an extra pump, just, just to basically buy an extra pump in case one of the other pumps, uh, fails in, you know, in the near future. Uh, because obviously pumps will keep going up in cost, so it might be, uh, prudent for us to buy it now. And the other item is a standby diesel generator, which, uh, really is, is not needed technically. Uh, it's good to have because if the power goes out of the pumps, then the pond basically fills up and you got nothing to pump it out. Now, there is a spillway on the pu- on the pond where basically if that pond fills up, it's gonna drain to the same drainage pattern as the pump is pumping it at. It's, uh, so we're not gonna be flooding any people's properties by no means if the pond fills up, but, um, and we obviously can, um, have, um, public works on, on standby. There will be an alarm system, wire, uh, Bluetooth wireless call, dial, deal where, you know, the pumps go down somehow, get a phone call, so there, there's emergency, apparatuses in place for that. Uh, so the generator's really, not really needed, but I, 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 I think, I feel strongly that, you know, having an additional pump, go ahead and bond that and doing the road work would be, uh, something ideal at, at this time. But right now, really, I just need your, uh, your concurrence to award the, the primary, the base bid, which is the nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Any questions?
Uh, Shirley Howe, here.
I have a question, this is.
Yes, go ahead, Shirley.
As it stands right now, is it in the flood zone?
No, none of this project is in the flood plain. The flood plain is actually on the other side of Indian Trail Road across from First Avenue. So we're, we're nowhere near the flood plain.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, uh, Councilman Morse here.
Go ahead, Mr. Morse, you have the table.
Yeah, uh, Todd, on the, uh, the additional pump and the road work, do you have an estimate on that?
Well, you, you'll be getting, uh, at the budget retreat this Saturday, I was gonna give you an update on phase two. This is obviously phase one, uh, which is, you know, obviously close to a million dollars. Uh, I fe- phase two, I feel confident it's probably gonna be around the same amount to fix all the drainage along the roadway so we can get that road to a standard, um, so it quits deteriorating. Um, so yeah, I, I feel confident it's gonna be a million probably a piece for each phase.
And, uh, the, uh, which phase has to come first, just for clarification? The road work?
The, the, no, the, no, this one, right. We have to stop the water from going over the roadway, yes, yes.
Okay.
And this is gonna do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Marcus McIntyre.
The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, Mr. Barber, you were gonna ask a question before I asked mine, I wanted to know if you had one to ask, so I know you had put up your hand. I wanted to know if you had one to ask, so I know you had put up your hand.
Uh, well, this was from Mr. Uh, Hunsinger is he kind of, you know, suggested awarding the contract and the alternatives. So would it be best to, you think, go ahead and do the, uh, award the contract and approve the alternatives at this point?
Uh, yes, I would certainly do, do that now. And we can always, uh, come back and, and as a staff and say, look, we, we, we thought about that generator and we, we feel it's not warranted and just give you an update later on and say, we're not going to spend the money. Or we could have savings after the project, like the, the 994,000 that has a 10% contingency. That's like 90,000. We may not use that 90,000. We may not use the, the 904 base bid. If we have savings in the contract, you know, I could all sit and go ahead and buy the generator. So we, we could give you an update later on if y'all want to go ahead and just approve both. I mean, that would be the cleaner way to do it, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I'd rather go ahead and do it and then it's there if you need it.
Hmm.
So go, go ahead, Mr. McIntyre, that was my question.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Hunsinger, I know that in the budget we had for this particular project, we had 1.1 million, right? For 20, this year's budget?
That's, that's correct.
So this is coming in under budget based on the contingency and that 900 award, right? Roughly, it's roughly, we're roughly on budget right now. Okay.
Yeah, roughly on budget, yes.
All right. So yeah, uh, uh, that's, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, uh, the reason I was asking that question is because I know that we, um, the revenues we have to keep track of, we have to look at expenses. But the thing is, we did budget this, these people pay taxes in the town. I have been advocating for this, you know, for us to do something over there. And this was one of the plans presented with the acquisition of the lot and getting all this done. So that, that's why I was asking that particular question about the budget.
Understood. If there's no further questions, I'll need a motion.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that, that we approve the First Avenue Pond and Pump Station beta award as presented by Mr. Hunsinger on the engineering department.
Okay.
Do you want to add the alternatives on that?
Oh, yeah, that's why I said as presented because it's with the alternatives. Yes, sir.
All right, understood.
Okay. Let that be, no, that's fine, let that be understood clearly. All in favor? Uh, Mr. Head?
In favor?
In favor? Mr. Morris?
In favor?
And Ms. Howe?
In favor.
And Mr. Barber?
In favor.
Okay, I don't, didn't miss anybody. Okay, motion approved unanimously. And we have the next item, which is, um, approval of, dang it, came up light on my paper.
Approval to proceed.
Proceed with the, um, stormwater build grant application, Mr. Hunsinger.
All right, this, this came across, uh, uh, my, uh, my desk early this year. Uh, the US Department of Transportation is basically, uh, doing another build grant program. It was formerly called the Tiger Program that they've been doing for years. And now I think the last couple of years, they, they, they decided to call it something different, which is a bill. Basically, it's, it's, they're, they're, uh, it's a grant for over a billion dollars to upgrade American infrastructure throughout the United States. And so everybody in the United States basically can apply for this. Um, when I got to reading it, I, you know, I noticed that there's, uh, an amount designated within the billion for just planning, uh, or planning grants or slash studies. And so they have to designate a certain amount for that. And so I called, I talked, contacted, um, our, my TCC route for Union County and talked to him about it and I said, look, I said, uh, I'm not really familiar too much with this grant, but what do you, what do you think of an idea about, you know, we, we've got these flood maps, um, that I, you know, the town created one, the county created one, and then of course county incorporated ours and theirs where we have obviously areas in these rural streets, um, that basically flood, uh, with, you know, within a certain design storm, just basically flood every time, uh, uh, a decent amount of rain, especially a couple inches per hour. So I'm thinking to myself, is, is there a way, uh, because I knew, you know, if Indian Trail went after this, being it's just, you know, it's a small area, you know, we would never get this. So I'm thinking, well, if we do a county-wide deal, um, what'd you, what would you think? And he thought it was a pretty good idea. And so he ran with it and, and started contacting DOT to see if they would be on board and, and, uh, some of his county folks. And everybody seemed to think that it was a good idea to go after it. And so he's, uh, obviously, uh, deals with other municipalities. So he got everybody else on board, started talking to them about it. And so it's kind of, uh, morphed from there. And so as, as you seen in the packet, I don't know if the packet says it's not, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, I think 10 out of the 14 municipalities are in favor of, of moving forward with it. The county has, has, uh, has went to, went to their board and basically gra, had been granted to move forward and spend 10,000 just on the grant application itself. Now, this doesn't mean this is going to happen. Obviously, uh, most of this money, I went back and looked at, um, the, the awards for the last two years and it's mostly, you know, building things and not really planning or study areas or analyzing things. But being that they haven't evidently did that, maybe we have a good shot, um, this go around to, for them to select something that's just basically a study area type, uh, application. So he actually contacted Lancaster County because, uh, some of the county, uh, drainage basin goes towards Lancaster or falls into Lancaster. Actually Lancaster's in favor of, of adding funds as well. So then, so you got, you got 10 out of the 14, you got Lancaster on board. And so county decided to move forward. So he just needs a, um, we decided to just do a resolution. So I would have asked y'all to, uh, move forward with the resolution that the town supports moving forward with, um, a $20,000, uh, call it a donation to the, to the study. Now, it may change a little bit. It may, you know, be a little higher than 20,000, but it's going to be around the 20,000 range. Uh, but again, it won't, the funds don't even have to be, um, authorized till 2022, 2023. And again, if we don't even get selected, we, we don't lose anything. We just, the town doesn't spend any money. But I think it's a good thing. It would basically help analyze the whole area, uh, give DOT actually, um, data uh, as far as, uh, prioritizing improvements. And it would help us with developments prioritizing stormwater controls in certain areas. Uh, so I think it's a win-win for the, for the locals and for the, the DOT. And also in the future, we could use this data to possibly, if the, the DOT doesn't have, uh, the, the funds to say replace a culvert that is not, not adequate, then, um, we would, could certainly maybe do a, a joint venture with DOT to add funds to a project, to a, just a, make, call it a maintenance project, just to replace a culvert crossing and, and get into those types of programs in the future. So that's kind of where we, uh, the idea came from. Any questions?
All right, um, no questions. And I need a motion. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you. I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
McIntyre here. Um, I'll make a motion to approve, for the approval to proceed with the stormwater bill grant application as described by Mr. Hunsinger. We are aware that the town may contribute up to $20,000 or slightly more, but that these expenses will not happen until 2022 or fr, or later than that. And that it should be not be selected. We will not have to, we will not be spending of the taxpayers' money.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. Uh, Mr. Barber?
Approve.
Okay, Ms. Howe?
In favor.
Mr. Morris?
In favor.
Mr. Head? Hello?
Oh, in favor? Headed on mute, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. All right, so that would make it unanimous. Which brings us to 10F, Mr. McIntyre, you have the floor. I believe that's the budget amendment?
Yeah. No, sir, that is, um, 10, no, sir, 10, um, that is 10F would be the, um, Crime Stoppers of Union County asking the town for some donation to go towards the meals for, yeah.
I wasn't aware I could write that down.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, you have the floor.
Well, actually, Mr. Alan has the floor.
The email came to him and he'll probably just give us a little bit of an idea on that, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Great. Um, so I did have this, it was a telephone call just a few minutes before, um, our town council meeting this morning. So that's why we didn't have the opportunity to get this information to you previously. Uh, but Mr. Reed Helms, who is head of Union County Crime Stoppers, contacted me. And Union County Crime Stoppers is putting together sort of a recognition event for law enforcement. Um, I think they've already done something, he indicated, for other first responders. But, um, it'll be on May the 18th and they're providing a meal in partnership with Hilltop Restaurant, either a lunch or a, or a dinner at the law enfor, each law enforcement officer's preference that, uh, just to recognize them for what they're doing during these difficult times. And he has reached out, he is reaching out to all the municipalities in Union County, asking if they would help support this in a financial way. He indicated that the range of donations approved so far are between 200 and $500. He mentioned that Indian Trail is of course the largest town in Union County. And he was just asking if council would approve some kind of a donation, uh, for this, uh, recognition project.
Okay. Counsel discussion?
Councilman Morris, is this, to be recognized?
Yes, sir, floor is yours.
Who? Me?
Yes.
Me, Todd.
Mr. Morris.
Okay.
Oh, I, I heard, sorry, I heard.
Go ahead, Mr. Morris. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
Great, thank you. Um, so my first question is, you know, this last minute phone call, are we circum, is this circumventing our donation policy? Uh, can we donate without, you know, really circumventing the policy? That's my question.
The policy, the policy states that they present, well, he mentioned it to us, so he's presenting it today, but you guys need to, to look it, look it over and it's, will automatically be put on the next agenda for approval or denial. That's, that's our policy. Give it a chance for everybody to see, really see what they do. But we know, we know what Crime Stoppers does. So you can, you can choose to, to go against the, uh, policy or you can hold the policy in place and put it on the next agenda.
Oh, this is Mr. Barber, I have a question. Was it, can I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Alan, what amount would you recommend that, uh, we authorize?
Um, if, if council wants to do that, um, I would suggest that you look at, he said that the range has been 200 to 500. He, you know, he is aware of the size of Indian Trail. So I would think if you elect to do it, they probably would, would, would like to see a donation somewhere in the 500 to the $1,000 range. But again, that's entirely at the discretion of, of the council.
I would say 500 is adequate.
Can I ask a question, sir? Can I, can I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. McIntyre? Yes.
So two things, two points. Um, first one is Mr. Jim Walderwitz, are you on the call, sir? Mr. Walderwitz? If he's not on the call, Mr. Alan, can we get an idea as to, um, I guess we are sort of approaching the end of April on, on Thursday. Um, just, I know you sent projections last time, it was for, uh, nine months. We had three more months to go and these are the months that are heavily in the, uh, reduction in business activity, COVID-19, that sort of thing. So it would be good to know kind of where we stand from a financial standpoint. I know that we may have some things that we were planning to do that we're not going to do. And therefore, um, we do have, we will probably end up having, you know, meeting our expenses and our revenues. The second thing I wanted to mention, um, in there is the policy states that we should present and, and so forth. These are unprecedented times, we've never experienced this before. So to adhere to every single policy and try and do that, it's, sometimes we do have to be a little bit flexible. I do recognize the need for, um, the first responders, especially law enforcement in, in, in these times. Um, you know, some of them being out there, exposed themselves to, to this COVID-19, um, virus. And, and it, it is, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt much for us to show a little bit of appreciation for what they're doing. Um, so Mr. Mayor, we can probably go ahead, I, I don't know what the rest of the council will do and, and they'll make their decision. But we can probably go ahead and get some information from Jim. But I am leaning towards, you know, uh, putting up a motion to granting, um, some money towards, uh, Union County Law Enforcement. I, I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do. If, if the suggestion from Mr. Alan is $500, I personally would put 100 and therefore the town will only need to put four. Um, I think that would be a good gesture.
May I, uh, be recognized, Mayor?
Yes, ma, yes, Mr. Alan.
Um, Jim was having some trouble, um, communicating on his phone. He's, he, so he walked into my office right now. So, Mr. McIntyre, um, if you, can you rephrase your question to Jim about the, um?
Yeah, Jim, do, is, I, I'm asking from a revenue and expense standpoint. Um, I know we have some items that may not necessarily be, um, undertaken during this fiscal year. But do you think that if we were to vote and approve $400 for the, um, for the Union County Crime Stoppers, uh, proj, um, effort to the provide meals to, um, law enforcement within the county, do you think that would have a detrimental effect on the town's finances, sir?
Negative, Marcus, we could find that $400.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, this is Mike, would I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jim, uh, I know in our budget, uh, we typically have, um, I think it's 300 or $3,000 for, um, these type of funds. Uh, do we have anything left?
No, the 3,000 has been expended.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. All right, everybody have their questions answered? Mr. McIntyre, you're more than, you're more than within your rights to make the motion today.
Mayor, may I have a, may I have a floor for just a minute? This is Karen.
Yes. Yeah, of course you can.
If we are going to, um, make a motion to actually vote today in, uh, in kind of, in violation of our, our regular policy, what I'd ask is that the first motion be that we suspend the policy, uh, for today's vote and move and vote on that, have council, and then go ahead and make the, the motion to the actual expenditure, if that be, so just.
That's, that's fine. Okay, that would be fine.
It, it's really, it's really up to the council. I'm prepared to vote at the next meeting for this, which is in the next two weeks. Um, if this is going to be on May 18th, I think we have enough time to be able to provide that. So we don't necessarily need to suspend the rules right now. We can if somebody wants to, but I can wait to vote at the second meeting to appropriate the, those dollars.
Okay. Is, um, just, do you want to make a motion and see it? Yes, Mr. Morris?
Yeah. Um, I, I appreciate that, um, Councilmember McIntyre, that, um, you know, the only thing that concerns me, and I, look, I totally support Crime Stoppers. I personally give to them every year. But, um, what I don't want to do is see us, um, circumvent the donation process. And that, that's my only concern. So if we could postpone it till, till the, you know, the actually vote on it the next time, I will vote in favor of it. It's just, I don't want to set a precedent and then have the people calling into the town 10 minutes before a council meeting looking for donations. That's all.
When Mr. Helms said they needed the money by when? When is it?
Um, I think, I think as Mr. McIntyre indicated, if, if they have it by the 18th or even after, because they can upfront the cost and then I think they could.
Okay.
Fill with the town's appropriation if you elect to move.
Okay. All right, so we'll, uh, put this on the next meeting.
So, um, Ms. Quinn, Mark, Marcus McIntyre, asking for a little recognition, or to be recognized, sorry. Um, just one thing to note, that the town, we, we may end up asking for $400. I will personally put the, the 100 to make it five, so please put that on record. Should somebody make that motion and I am not present, um, that I will personally contribute a hundred dollars to go towards that. I, I think that's a worthy cause and, and a good effort. Um, you know, I have no problem with waiting for the particular period or following the process and then just doing it that way.
That will be fine. You have that, Kathy?
I have it down, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and we added, uh, there was a lot of talk, I got confused, was it item 13? No. The discussion item. Eleven, 11A. Okay.
I think we're on, uh, oh, A, Mayor, we're on 12 managers update?
Well, we had a, add an item from Mr. McIntyre for a budget, budget.
So, so that, that was 70 consent agenda, that's passed. So that was 70 consent agenda, that's passed already.
7F, right, and the Crime Stoppers, so we're good, we're on 12.
Okay. Sorry about that. I wrote it in the wrong spot. All right, we go to managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I only have two items to discuss today. One, I just wanted to give council and mayor a brief update about the town in COVID-19. We're continuing to deal with that as best we can. As you know, when things began to get serious, the governor started to issue the stay-at-home order, a number of our employees are at home, some who cannot work from home or on leave, others who can work from home are working from home, and we tried to work and provide them with the best technology we can to do that. The department heads are primarily coming into the office every day, although some, they are electing to work from home some days, but they're all here most of the time. And then selected staff are coming in, but we're staggering that so that we don't have too many people in the building at one time, and so that we can maintain a really good distance. And due to the size of the building here, that's worked well, and we've had no trouble at all keeping, keeping distance. As you know, the governor extended the stay-at-home order until 5:00 PM on May 8th. We're watching that, looking at the state recommendations, the CDC recommendations. The leadership team meets weekly to talk about that, any new developments. We are already beginning to plan for when we may be able to reintroduce workers back into town hall, other than the ones that are working now. And we have Kerry in HR and Adam in Public Works have been looking to make sure that we have adequate supplies when that occurs in terms of hand sanitizer. We've ordered masks. We have ordered thermometers that we can take employees' temperature if we need to, prior to reporting to work, those kinds of things. So we are beginning to lay the groundwork so that when it is safe for employees to return, hopefully that will go smoothly. Are there any questions, Your Honor, about our COVID-19 response?
Yep. The only thing I have to say is, I think Indian Trail handled this top-notch. Great job, everybody. And thank you.
Sure.
That's it.
Okay. If there are no other questions on that, then the other item I wanted to mention to you is the Sardis Road Roundabout. I understand that that's a project that's been coming for a long time, and it's finally here. The contractor for that project mobilized yesterday, on Monday, putting up signage, working on erosion control and that sort of thing. A start date for the actual construction has not yet started, but Todd Hunsinger is working with NC DOT, and we should have that start date information within the next few days. It's possibly as early as next week, but we don't know, and we'll make sure that we inform council of that. And of course, Abby is planning to put information out on the town's website, Facebook page, other social media, to keep people informed about that. That is going to cause an inconvenience for some motorists, and we understand that, and so we're going to be doing as best we can to communicate that. That won't, that won't stop the inconvenience, but at least we're going to try to inform people as best we can. One reason they're able to, they're going to be able to get started a little earlier than anticipated, of course, because school is not going to be returning to session for the rest of the year. As you recall, the construction was actually supposed to be delayed until after school stopped for the year because of the COVID-19 situation. School is let out early, so they are actually going to be able to get a little early start. The completion date is in August, prior to the beginning of school. We don't know if they'll be able to finish early or not, and regardless, they do have the contract completion date in their contract. Todd, one thing he's been doing is been communicating with the school, that is a meal distribution center at the school, and he's been keeping them aware that this is coming, and as soon as we have the date of construction, he'll make sure they're aware of that as well. And Todd has been communicating with the school regarding that. Mayor, are there any questions about that project?
Counsel, any questions?
Um, no.
No way.
McIntyre, yeah, I live in that section of town, and I do use that area quite a bit. So I would really ask and encourage, you know, you and Mr. Allen and your staff to communicate to the public effectively, to make sure that they know, even if we don't have an idea, but, you know, project coming soon or something, just to get people ready. Some people who may not be on social media may be a little frustrated because they may not be able to pass when this thing goes on, but if I can encourage you to do that, that would really be helpful.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Can I mention one thing about that?
Sure.
When Mr. Allen was talking about start date, he's talking about actually closing the intersection itself. I mean, they do have a contract time right now where they can do work without closing the intersection, but really, when he says start date, that's, that's what he's referring to. We're going to want to close the intersection sooner than later, because obviously, we couldn't close the road till June the 10th, and now that, you know, they're not going to have to start school back, as long as we can keep food service running, which I'm sure we can, the contractors pushed forward to want to close the intersection, so we're trying to work with them to possibly get that started next week. I've talked to Ms. Captain James about borrowing the sheriff's messenger board sign, so once we know for sure the date of closing that intersection, we're going to put a messenger board sign that states that. I'll work with Mr. James about the messaging, what that would entail, and have a date ready for that. And then the contractor has offered to supply an additional sign on the other side for other traffic to be able to see, so, and without being compensated for, because he understands that this is a big deal, it's a heavy traffic intersection, so we need all the mess, you know, all the upfront messaging that we can get, provide out there for the residents. So just wanted y'all to make aware of that.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I had one, one final item.
Okay.
Jim asked me just to remind council that we do have our second budget workshop this coming Saturday from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Again, it will be virtual. Jim is going to be providing budget packages to council in advance of the meeting so that you'll all have the information in front of you. As we present, each department head will be making brief presentations, answering questions from council. At the first budget workshop, that was a very high level, sort of the major priorities, initiatives that the department heads were looking at. We had an opportunity to get input from council as to the things that you wanted to see incorporated into the budget, so that's been taken into account. So department heads have presented line item budgets to me. Jim and I tweaked those in order to bring everything into balance. So the budgets that will be discussed on Saturday are all in balance, the general fund, the power bill fund, and the stormwater fund. This is not the official presentation of the budget. What we will do is, this will be information, and then you'll have a chance to respond to what we're presenting. Let us know if you have any concerns, or changes, or things you'd like to see in the budget, and then the formal presentation of the budget will be in May. Just wanted to remind council about that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to council comments. Karen?
Mr. McIntyre, since I can see you, sorry.
All right, good. So first of all, Mr. Mayor, I know that you said that you were going to have surgery. We do wish for a successful surgery and a speedy recovery. If you need anything besides lunch during that time, let me know. Anything besides lunch, okay?
Anything.
Yeah. Mr. Allen, you and your staff, I want to thank you guys for all that you're doing. I do have a question for Mr. Hunsinger, and I'll probably follow up with you, but it would be something that we should be able to report back to the public, which is, based on the recent North Carolina budget issues, the Monroe Road project, we just contributed the first $1 million to. Is that project still a go? If it is, great. If it's not, any idea how long it's been delayed to, any funding shortfalls? That's one of the questions that I got from one of the, one of our constituents. So that's something that we could probably find an answer to and provide that information, maybe through social media or something, just to give the, just to give the public an idea as to, that project, it's an important project, but we know that we do have some challenges due to this whole pandemic going on. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We do ask that everybody pay attention to the rules. You did see me in the meeting touching my beard and so forth. I have hand sanitizer right off to my spring, so I'm, you know, and I'm inside the house, so I'm okay for now. But please adhere to the rules and the directives that come from the federal government, the state, and all on your local leaders. Thank you, everybody, and please stay safe while practicing personal distancing, if I can say that.
Ms. Howe?
Yes, it was a nice meeting. It's, it's a little bit of adjustment, but it's good that everybody can hear at the same time, and we're getting things done. And I stress that that's what I'm looking forward to. We got to keep moving forward, and this council's getting along, and we've got good staff, and it just makes everything more pleasant to work, work for, with. And I hope everybody has a great day, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, I'd like to thank Meg Fielding for her very kind comments and the public comments, and really like to thank all the people of Indian Trail for their patience with the garbage service and the town staff, and working with our having to limit the parks and council activities. It's been, we've really not had a lot of complaints, and everything, everybody's been really great during this, and I really like to reach out to the people around the First Avenue and let them know that, hey, this has been a long time coming, but it's really great to see that this project is coming, and I know, I appreciate their patience and everything on this, and my prayers to the mayor on his surgery. If you need anything, let me know. And I'd just like to thank the, thank the staff for doing a great job during this timeframe, and, and the council for everything, getting things done, as like Ms. Howe said, it is very much a proactive council that does seem to want to get things done for the best interest of the people, and I just want to say thanks to everyone. Have a blessed day.
Mr. Morse?
Yes, thank you so much, staff, for putting this presentation together for us. Also, to the general public and everyone, you know, we are in some different times right now, and facing some challenges, so just, you know, be kind to one another, and be a friend, be charitable, be patient, and check on your neighbors, and, you know, and if you, if you can, please practice the social distancing as much as possible, if not really for yourself, for somebody else's family member. Y'all have a great day, and look forward to the budget workshop this weekend.
Mr. Head?
He's probably got himself on mute again.
Hear me?
We hear you now. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, I get it. Go ahead.
All right. I just want to thank staff and Ray for all the work they've been doing behind the scenes. Want to thank all the citizens for adhering to, to all the requests that have been made of us, and that hopefully we are not far from somewhat getting back to normal. And then one last thing, in terms of the, I meant to ask before, in terms of the manager search. I know that Karen has sent something out requesting, you know, some information from each of the council members. The more we put into the, to this upfront piece, the better off we'll be to bring in the right person. So just ask that everybody send in their ideas, and looking forward, moving forward. With that, everybody have a good day, and thanks.
Ken Alvarez?
Oh, it's my time. Well, of course, staff, you've done a great job. You've been on top of everything. The residents have been wonderful, and going with the flow, handling things correctly. And when they say show up to this meeting, thank you. Many, in the past, many would not have showed up to a virtual meeting regardless. They, they would have found an excuse, so I thank you all for being on a virtual meeting, and I appreciate all the prayers and thoughts. We'll all be fine. Just remember, since we didn't say it in the meeting, the days I'll be out for surgery once they, then, and I'm incapacitated, Marcus will be your point of contact as it goes to the mayor per town. And Karen's going to put that in just a little document that goes into the, goes in, just goes in as a policy F for you guys to vote on the right of succession when somebody's out of, incapacitated for a moment. So, and yes, these are unprecedented times, that's for sure. And since we've been playing it by ear, I think we did a pretty good job. We're doing a pretty good job. And everybody have a blessed day, and this ends soon.
Okay, everybody there?
Yes.
Yes.
I need a, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, oh.
That was my kid.
My kid made the motion.
My kid, okay. Mr. Head made the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Uh.
McIntyre in favor.
Everybody's in favor.
Yeah.
It's unanimous. Okay, everybody have a great day, stay safe, and like each of you said, just do your best to practice these stay-at-home rules. I know it's driving me crazy. But, okay, have a good day, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Have a blessed day. Appreciate it.